It is 5:00 PM, so I'd like to call the meeting to order and call on Reverend Jackson Brewer, First United Methodist Church, retired, to lead us into invocations. So if you all would please stand or remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we thank you for the reason for the season. We thank you for the love and the joy and the spirit of giving and caring and togetherness that we feel, but we're also aware that our world is not perfect. There is so much hurt and so many needs. We pray today, Lord, for our mayor, for our city commissioners, for all of those on staff here. We pray for our firemen, our policemen, for those who care for us when we can't care for ourselves. We pray that today that what is done here in our city commission would be, a result would be, there would be health and care and love in our community. We give you thanks that we can live in a country like this and have the joy of sharing together at this time, so we ask that all be done, be done to be pleasing not only to ourselves but to you, in your holy name I pray. Amen.
Please remain standing for pledge of allegiance to be led by City Commissioner Don Hale.
(Inaudible) with the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Roach. Commissioner Hanes.
Here.
Commissioner Hanes. Mr. Bowers.
Here.
Mr. Hale.
Here.
Mayor Mack.
Here. Commissioner Roach, for the record, did call. He said he was going to be detained. He's on his way. Excuse me, now I'm getting choked. So he will be here shortly, but he will be here.
You're choked up over there.
Pardon?
You're choked up.
No, I swallowed something, swallowed something. First of all, tonight we have some ceremonial items. The first item is a promotion in the police department. This is going to be a promotion from sergeant to patrol, I'm sorry, to sergeant from patrol officer three, and this is Officer John Fields, who's been with us for several years and has done a tremendous job in his work in the department and is one of our new leaders. We're looking forward to having Sergeant Fields out with the new, I don't know if we're going to call them platoons or squads, however we do it, but we're looking forward to that leadership, so I'll come down and we'll do a ceremonial promotion.
Thanks, Mayor. John, come on up. Bring him down.
Thank you, Mayor. Real quick, this is my first official opportunity to promote an officer, and I couldn't be more proud to have John Fields as the person to be promoting. John is a ten-year veteran of the police department, who served in Army Air National Guard prior to coming to work for us back in 2004. He is a very active member of our tactical response unit, has been for some time. He's a field training officer, and John has really embraced, which is going to really coincide well with the rank of sergeant, the training and the furthering of the education of the officers in the department, as a firearms instructor, a PT/DT instructor, ASP instructor, handcuffing, and he truly is, if we have an all-star team, John will be the captain. So it's truly my pleasure to have a chance to promote him to the rank of sergeant here tonight. John, would you like to introduce you, your wife and your children?
Yes, this is my wife Teresa, and then my oldest nephew and my youngest, Bradley.
I told Teresa that it's up to her if she wants to pin the chevron on gently or if she wants to do it so that it stays. I'll defer to her on that.
And next item, we have a retirement of Jim McCarty in our Parks Department. Jim has been with us for 28-plus years, has done a tremendous job, and our co-director for the last three?
Seven.
Seven years.
Time flies when you have fun, man.
Mr. Bowers.
So we'll come forward, and I'll let Jim Parrish also say some things.
That's all right. They've had this mixed up for seven years. Thank you.
It just seems like it's small.
This gentleman doesn't really need a whole lot of introduction, everybody that's known him. He's done everything from Little League baseball to manage a 260-acre nature preserve and everything in between. We had a stop-by for him last Wednesday at the office with over 125 people in attendance, I think shows well. So I'm going to ask the mayor to read the short proclamation that was put together for Jim, to kind of sum it up the way we all feel.
Okay, thank you. We presented this last week to Jim at the Parks Department. We'll read again. It says, "To all to whom these presents shall come, whereas James Jim McCarty has been a dedicated member of the City of Frankfurt Department of Parks Recreation Historic Sites, serving for a total of more than 28 years, whereas Jim has tirelessly worked with dedication, loyalty, integrity to make the Frankfurt Park system second to none, whereas Jim has remained a loyal and faithful husband to his wonderful wife Jenny, and father to his daughters Emily and Alicia, and whereas Jim will be greatly missed by all whom he has influenced during his years of service, and now therefore I, William A. Jr., Mayor of the City of Frankfurt, do hereby proclaim December 17, 2014, as Jim McCarty Day." We presented that last Friday. We'll do it again. We also have a retirement plaque that we will also give you for your 20 years of service.
Thank you, appreciate it. I don't have a whole lot to say, for the first time maybe in my career. I had a good reception the other day, and I got to say a few words. My wife said it didn't embarrass the McCarty name too bad, so we'll leave it. But I've had a great career, and when you get to these times, sometimes you get a little emotional. But if it hadn't have been for Steve Brooks hiring me two times, I wouldn't be here right now, so. I always did, so I got to thank Steve because he was wisdom and smart enough to hire me back the second time. Sometimes he doesn't get the credit that he deserves, but he made a smart move back in 1993 when he hired me back. And I said in my retirement letter, this has been a great place to work, and I'm not going away. I'll be around town. Thank you all very much.
Also, now we will approve the minutes. Are there any corrections, deletions, or any comments for the minutes? If not, we'll approve.
I make a motion to approve.
Moved by Commissioner Roach, seconded by Commissioner, was it Commissioner Bowers? Mr. Hale? Sorry, I can't. If there's no discussion, clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Roach.
Yes.
Mr. Hanes.
Yes.
Mr. Bowers.
Yes.
Mr. Hale.
Yes.
Mayor Mack.
Yes, minutes are approved. Next item is citizen comments. This is the section for any citizens to come forward. Please state your name. Don't have to put your address, just state your name, and we will let you have five minutes.
My name is Ann Gibbs, and I understand that the owner of the Old Yi Building, John Gray, was to meet with the City Commissioners members in the month of December. Has this meeting taken place?
We've not had any meetings that I've attended, so I don't think the commission has attended any.
It was my understanding that this meeting was required to solve some problems over there. Or do you ever intend to meet with him to solve some problems over there?
I don't. It's the life of us, won't it?
Ms. Gibbs?
Mm-hmm.
I will be providing options to the city at the work session in January to address the Old Yi Building.
Thank you. I will be there. Thank you very much. The reason I brought this up is because in my house, I found a copy of a newspaper story from November 20th, 2011, three years ago. According to Gary Mueller, the city's planning and building codes director, the building has been condemned for a number of years and was only open to the public for the designer showcase in October of 2011 on a temporary use permit. The only area to be used was in the front half of the first floor, and to open the doors for the event, workers had to put braces in the basement under the first floor. The reason there was a story on November 20th is the owner, John Gray, rented that property to someone to finish constructing a mural. You can't tell me he didn't know that building was condemned for use of any sort, and the fact that he had a temporary permit till it's three days only. I don't think it's fair to the city code enforcement people. I don't think it's fair to the nuisance board, and I certainly don't think it's fair to the citizens who try to maintain their property to be faced with that building over there on one of the main entryways into downtown Frankfurt. He has the imagination for that building, but he doesn't have the money and he doesn't have the parking, and this has been going on for three years. It's also my understanding he's not letting city people in there to inspect it. Is this true?
Have we had?
I don't know that we've had a need for any inspections.
I'll send them.
I'm sorry.
I don't know that we have had a need for any inspections in the recent past.
Do you not know if there's asbestos in that building? Can you get in to find out? If, I would assume if the building's under condemnation order, there should have been, must have been something to back it up, or, not condemnation order, I'm sorry, occupancy question.
To deal with asbestos issues, those are issues that you deal with when a building is being demolished or substantially renovated, and there's been no permit issued authorizing substantial renovation, and there's been no order issued concerning demolition. Certainly that will be an issue that will be addressed if the property, whatever, if the property is substantially renovated, then of course they would have to address that issue. If the property is demolished, that issue would have to be addressed as well. So certainly the city will make sure that if the property is demolished by the city, that the asbestos issue would be addressed properly by any contractor.
Okay, so in essence, you really don't know what you're going to get into because you haven't gotten into the building. You haven't gotten that far.
The city got bids a number of years ago for the cost of demolishing the property, but those bids are outdated, and now new bids have to be obtained, and I'm sure when those new bids obtained, that will be one component of the bids that are submitted by contractors that are going to be involved if the city is the entity that would be required to demolish it.
Well, at the rate it's going.
And that's if the building is demolished.
At the rate it's going, it seems like if anything's going to be done to it, the city's going to have to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. If you have further questions, you can send those to us.
I will. Don't worry.
All right. Any other citizen comments? I see none. Next item would be second first reading of ordinances, and the first one is 4.1. It would ask just if this would be read by title and sponsor, title and sponsor, I'm sorry, just going into legislative mode there. Title and summary only.
Yes, sir. By title, this is 4.1, by title, an ordinance amending Frankfurt Code of Ordinances, Chapter 52, Section 5204, Paragraph A1, charges relating to sewer rates. Summary, this ordinance defers the scheduled rate increases to January 1, 2016, and the increases shall be in the amount of 2.5% per year from 2016 through 2020, rather than the previously scheduled increases of 7.5% per year for 2016 and 2017. And Mayor, this is a second reading.
Thank you. So this would require a motion to second, but if there's other folks that want, if you have any questions or comments about it?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Roach. Was that right? I heard two voices.
I think Commissioner Bowers beat it.
Well, he can have it.
Commissioner, moved by Commissioner Bowers, seconded by Commissioner.
He can have it.
It's all right.
Who made the second?
It was a twin motion.
Mr. Hanes did.
Commissioner Hanes. Commissioner Bowers and Commissioner Hanes. Any further discussion? CNO, clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Roach.
Yes.
Mr. Hanes.
Yes.
Mr. Bowers.
Yes.
Mr. Hale.
Yes.
Mayor Mack.
Yes, 4.1 is adopted. Next item, 4.2, it asks to just be read by title and.
No, Mayor, like, I don't remember, like, the, um, this might be a good time to, like, put it out there, what that is going to do.
Okay.
So when people get their bills, you know, they've heard it out loud, so, we just read it by title, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we read the summary.
Oh, okay. So we're going to have a 2.5 rate increase in January, and, right, and then after that, four more, a year apart.
Right, and that's January 1st, 2016.
Okay.
Do you think we need to?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. 4.2.
4.2, by title, an ordinance amending Section 37.31E of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances relating to pay plan, classification, and compensation. Summary, this ordinance creates the position of IT manager in order to facilitate the reorganization of the IT division and to improve the efficiency and effectiveness of the IT division. The grade for the IT manager position will be 95, and Mayor, this is the second reading.
All right, thank you so much.
We can have this one.
I make a motion, we approve.
Moved by Commissioner Roach.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hale. Now, is there any further discussion? CNO, clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Roach.
Yes.
Mr. Hanes.
Yes.
Mr. Bowers.
Yes.
Mr. Hale.
Yes.
Mayor Mack.
Yes, 4.2 is adopted. That concludes the second readings. Now, the next ordinance will be first reading. Will they do not require a vote? This is the reading, so, 4.3 is an ordinance resoning property. Should I say it be read by title and sponsor only? Title and summary only. I'm so into being up there today.
4.3, an ordinance rezoning property for an approximately 0.3 acre of property identified as 304-306 Wapping Street and 316 Wapping Street in Frankfurt, Kentucky, and being more specifically described as PVA map number 6124111402, 61241115, and 6124111501, from SH, which is Special Historic to CB Central Business District. Summary, this ordinance approves a zone map amendment from SH, Special Historic to CB Central Business District, for the property located at 304-306 Wapping Street and the 316 Wapping Street in Frankfurt, Kentucky, and having the PVA map number 6124111402, 61241115, and 6124111501, and being more particularly described in the legal description attached here, too. Copy on file in the office of the city clerk.
All right, thank you so much. Next item is 4.4, it asks it be read by title and summary only.
By title, an ordinance amending ordinance number 9, 2014 series, appropriating the revenue to be received by the City of Frankfurt for the fiscal year 2014-2015. Summary, this ordinance amends the City of Frankfurt budget for fiscal year 2014-15 to include grants in the following sums: EPA Brownfield Assessment Grant, $400,000; Transportation Alternatives Grant, $233,350; Certified Local Government Grant, $10,800; Kentucky Homeland Security, $6,000. The ordinance also amends the City of Frankfurt budget for fiscal year 2014-15 to include additional funds for the Franklin County Humane Society, $10,000; Funds for the Kentucky National Guard Memorial, $15,000; Funds for the Family Aquatic Center, $750,000; Funds for Public Works, Old Landfill Repair, $25,355; Salts, $64,073. And Mayor, you'll note at the next meeting that the spelling of the word local will be correct.
Thank you very much. Next item, 4.5, it asks it to be read by title and summary only.
4.5, by title, an ordinance amending Sections 3904, 3907, and 3915 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances regarding ethics. Summary, this ordinance amends the City of Frankfurt's Code of Ethics by providing more specificity in Section 3907, the ordinance prohibiting the solicitation or acceptance of gifts by city employees or city officers. The definitions of the phrases "does business with" and "regulated by" were added to Section 3904 because these phrases are used in Section 3907 as amended. The definition of family members was amended to make it consistent with the definition of family members in the city's nepotism policy. Section 3915 was amended to incorporate by reference the city's nepotism policy as adopted by city order.
Again, this doesn't require a vote, but it's the first reading, and if anybody, I'm sorry, if anybody has questions about any of these, please, the next, January, the, is it the 5th? Is it the 5th? More accessible. 10. Voting meeting. 24? 26?
12th and the 26th.
26?
12th would be the work session, Mr. Mayor, and 26 would be the voting meeting, unless the commission changes.
I thought, I didn't realize I had 4.6. 4.6, please read by title and summary only.
4.6, by title, an ordinance amending Chapter 40, Sections 40, 56, of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances regarding police policies and procedures. Summary, this ordinance amends Chapter 40 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances by specifically amending Section 40.56 to provide that the Police Department Manual of Policies and Procedures is adopted by reference as an ordinance. The Manual of Rules of Conduct and Performance was integrated into the Manual of Policies and Procedures during the accreditation process.
Next item, we have orders. We have 5.1, and it's an order concerning nepotism. This one changes Section 3.1, Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual, deletes language of Section 3.1, and inserting new language, which is in the attachment. This does not apply to any current situations, it only applies to situations after the date of adoption, which is, whatever the city clerk codifies, or.
You know, this will be what's inside tonight, what they're, because I've opted in.
Okay.
Mayor.
Yes, Commissioner Bowers?
I just noticed, like, in number five, where it identifies what a family member is.
Are you looking at the ordinance? I mean, the order amending, sorry.
I am.
Okay.
I don't see cousins there. Are cousins not family?
It wasn't included.
Neither are nieces or nephews. Because I see, like, stepsister, stepbrother, and, you know, in some cases, those might be more distantly related than, like, first cousins, but, well, I mean, just wondered, if you wanted to put it in there. You probably don't, or you would have, but it just looks blatantly missing to me, but...
If I may, I was just going to say, the definition was what is existing in the nepotism ordinance, and so we just use the same definition.
You just took it straight from there?
Yes.
Well, I just pointed that out.
Just for reference. Thank you.
It was Section 3.1, I think, with the main changes in the city's Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual, which, I guess we don't have that copy here, that in front of us.
Oh, no, I don't, I don't question where it came from.
No, I was saying, in case you wanted to look further.
I'm sorry, from where it came. I just wondered if we wanted to put that in, but I just put it out there to think about.
Anyone, any other comments commissioners want to be recognized? I have some concerns about the way it's written, that.
I have one. Do you have one with the phrase in number one, "as long as those departments do not work closely together"? Because I would just think that all of our departments need to work closely together so that we're a well-functioning organization.
Where, I'm sorry, where were you reading from?
I'm reading from the summary.
Oh, the summary? Okay.
Um, the, the sub one, immediate family members can be hired in separate departments, divisions, as long as those departments do not work closely together. Well, I realize that that's a very subjective term, which I guess the city manager will have to interpret with every case, but I would just think that every department, division within city government should work very closely together to function well, but it's just going to be open to some of these interpretations, which is fine if that's what we're doing. I think because there's another, there's another place in there that leaves some discretion, I think, to the city manager and the city commission anyway, but I guess it's a little loose, is what I'm saying.
That was my concern. Commissioner Hale?
Yeah, that's my concern with ordinance. We, you know, we've had discussion and work session, and I think everybody already knows my position on this, so it's a little redundant for me saying it all again, I guess, but to me, you either have a nepotism policy or you don't, and I think this policy really does not, if, if the purpose of the policy is to abolish favoritism and any morale problems of family members working together, I don't think it goes far enough, because as Mr. Bowers pointed out, you know, it doesn't include cousins, it doesn't include nieces and nephews. You cannot hire my brother, but you can hire my brother's son. So to me, those things still leave a lot of wiggle room, and then there's the exception clause, which I know that Mr. Zizov is very much opposed to nepotism, so I doubt that he's going to make many exceptions, but Mr. Zizov isn't going to be here forever either. And so it, you know, it just leaves it awfully wishy-washy to me, and the. And so, it, you know, it just leaves it awfully wishy-washy to me, and the flip of that is, has there been a problem with the current policy? And so, but anyway, I just have some problems with, with it as it's written.
Yes, I wasn't gonna say anything, but I guess I will.
It's your turn.
Well, I don't feel like that. If you guys remember, in the, in the process, it's like making sausage. It's not always as pretty as you would like, but if you remember in the work session, we talked about all of these things, and we agreed, unless I missed something, we agreed we were gonna go, go along with it, even though we didn't like it perfectly, and so, that's where I thought we were. So, you know, as, as far as the family members, I think what we did, we did, we just took the existing language, and I can see where there, there could be other things, but if, if we get into the cousins and nieces and nephews, you won't be able to hire anybody in Frankfurt because of the relationship, so I think that was part of that, and I understand just what you're saying, Commissioner Haynes, about the making it stricter, but I think it, the, the new policy is stricter than what we had, and I think the thought was, is there wouldn't be support to have that strict of a policy. And as far as exceptions, I think that the, you have to have some exception language in case there's a specialized job that you can't find anybody for. And then the last thing, working closely. I agree with Commissioner Bowles, we do need to work closely, but I think this was more talking about where there're gonna be a close interaction between departments on a regular basis, which would then lead to the supervision or people working together that were related under nepotism, and that would be where the problem would lie, it would be on a more regular basis, as opposed to something that would be highly irregular. So, I guess where I am is, is I'm fine with it, I don't think it's perfect, but when we were in the work session, I think everybody said all these things, and then we kinda said, well, we're just gonna go, go with it. Once the Ethics Committee had gotten their information and, and had made some adjustments, that was the only thing left to do.
Just so I can put my comments in, there's no such thing as a perfect policy, so no matter, even if we had cousins in there, it'd be something else years from now, but I, I think it was an improvement as far as trying to, trying to actually zoom in on making sure that we didn't do things just because somebody knew a family member and knew the ins and outs of how to get there. I also liked that I saw input from directors that went in this policy, nobody got everything they wanted, because I saw a lot of input on some of the drafts coming forward, and I even had some concerns, and some of my concerns were addressed. You know, all of them wasn't, but then again, that's what everybody kinda gives up something when you're looking for, let's put something out there that we can see if it works or not, because otherwise you would never get a policy if you tried to make it perfect. You'd keep tweaking it and tweaking it, and every time it comes around, there'd be something wrong with it. I, I looked through this when I was a little concerned at first on some of the exceptions, but it was, you know, I couldn't figure out if it was an exception just for one person to make or for a director and, you know, the city's manager to make, but I think it kinda lays it out, it even includes the commissioners, that if there's a problem with that, it comes before us. So I, I think that gave it that leeway that I was looking for, to make sure that something's not still happening and we not even be aware of it, because that has happened in the past.
Any further?
I just wanna say that the only reason I put that on the table is to see if anybody, you know, we don't vote till we vote, and sometimes people make decisions away from here and leave some of us out, so I just wanted to put everything on the table. Those are my only concerns with it, and I think certainly this is better than what we had before. I am one of those people that wanna tweak things until I get it as near as perfect as I can get it, so I just wanted to know if people had any further thoughts about any of those areas. I'm fine to go ahead with it tonight, but it's the last opportunity, well, it's never the last opportunity, we can come back and amend later on, but, but there's an opportunity tonight to fix any of those little things if we choose to do so, but if people don't wanna tweak it anymore, I'm fine to move ahead with it. It is better than what we have. It's a move into what I consider to be the right direction, so.
I make a motion to approve.
By Commissioner Roach.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Haynes. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Mister Roach?
Yes.
Commissioner Haynes?
Yes.
Mister Bowles?
Yes.
Mister Haye? I reluctantly vote yes. I was gonna vote no, but I've, I've given the reason for my objections. Nothing is ever perfect. Basically, I just wanted it on the record that it does have room for improvement, so I'll also vote yes. Mayor?
I'll vote yes tonight, but do agree, too, that I would like to see some things cleared up, but we can always go back. I don't wanna use the word tweak it, but we can always go back, but I think I have concerns with the exception clauses. So, vote yes, and the order is adopted. Next one is resolutions. No resolutions tonight, we'll have the consent calendar items, we have several on that, and we're gonna take, we've had a request to remove seven point two and seven point twenty-three at the request of, of the Parks Department, so if there's no objection, we'll remove seven point two and seven point twenty-three and let those be discussed at a future meeting.
No objection.
Objection, thank you.
Sure. I mean, no objection.
Got it. We did.
Good morning, Mayor. Thank you. Item seven point one is not to exceed forty-one thousand professional services agreement with H M B. Professional Engineers for sewer renovations in the Thornhill subdivision. Item seven point three is a five hundred thousand dollar lease agreement with, a five hundred dollar lease agreement with Bluegrass Canoes for a portion of the Riverview Park from April one, two thousand fifteen through October thirty-one, two thousand fifteen. Item seven point four is a fifty dollar per game day use agreement with K S U. for one softball field at Lakeview Park for two thousand fifteen, with a potential for four additional years. Item seven point five is a one-year agreement with G and J. Pepsi-Cola Bottlers to provide soft drink products and equipment at parks and recreation facilities effective January one, two thousand fifteen, with a potential for four additional years. Item seven point six is not to exceed one hundred and seventy-one thousand dollar professional services agreement with Hazen and Sawyer for engineering services, including flow monitoring, monitoring, to repair and or replace an interceptor line from Center Drive to the Kentucky River. Item seven point seven is not to exceed thirty thousand, six hundred and twenty dollar professional services agreement with H M B. for field study and recommended alternatives for sewer repairs in the Holm Street area. Item seven point eight is an eighty-nine hundred dollar professional services agreement with Q K. four to provide safety upgrade design services for the wastewater treatment plant. Item seven point nine is not to exceed one hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and eighteen thousand dollar professional services agreement with Q K. four to provide design services for the Rolling Acres Phase One Sewer Rehabilitation Project. Item seven point ten is twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollar change order number one with Cleary Construction to use PVC pipe and build an additional manhole for the Myrtle Avenue Phase One project. Revised contract amount is one million, one hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred and one dollars. Item seven point eleven is thirty-day contract extension change order number one with Insiqiform Technologies due to additional point repairs. Revised contract completion date is January twenty-eight, two thousand fifteen. Item seven point twelve is twenty thousand, two hundred and five dollar amendment number four with C D M. Smith to provide additional design fees for the Crestwood I N. I. project to avoid existing utilities. Revised contract amount is three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Item seven point thirteen is not to exceed eighty thousand, four hundred and fifty dollar professional services agreement with U R. S. to provide design services for the Two Creeks and Blanton Acres Neighborhood I N. I. project. Item seven point fourteen, one hundred and fifty thousand dollar contract extension with Hydro Max USA to provide cleaning and televising sanitary sewer mains. Item seven point fifteen is not to exceed eighty-four thousand, five hundred dollar service agreement with Strand Associates to provide design services for the Rolling Acres Phase Two I N. I. project. Item seven point sixteen, reauthorized purchasing a Timco Model Regenerative Air Streetsweeper using an interlocal contract for cooperation purchasing at the original price of two hundred thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirteen cents due to the Kentucky Master Agreement expiration. Item seven point seventeen, change orders number one and two, twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars and twelve thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars respectively for replacing wires, a battery backup, adding a battery backup, and drywall for the Bridge Street and City Hall renovation projects. Item seven point eighteen is a three thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollar, forty-eight cent final quantities change order number two with Conhurst LLC. for the Crestwood Drainage Project. Final contract amount is nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand, sixty-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents. Item seven point nineteen is authorize and designate use of one point five million re-scripted audit reserve fund for capital projects, including Bridge Street building improvements, Riverview Boat Dock expansion, and Green Hill Cemetery fences. Item seven point twenty, two hundred and seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollar agreement with Bluegrass Uniforms and Equipment to purchase forty self-contained breathing, breathing apparatus units and associated equipment for the Fire Department. Item seven point twenty-one, three-year, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollar per month agreement with Windstream to provide a dual connectivity component I S. P. service. Item seven point twenty-two, ninety-two thousand dollar vector body replacement purchase from Jack Dehaney Companies for the Sewer Department's two thousand and one vac truck. Item seven twenty-four is two thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars, forty-eight cents deduct amendment number three to H D. R. Engineers Agreement for the Crestwood Storm Sewer Drainage Project. Item seven twenty-five is interlocal contract for cooperative purchasing with the Houston-Galveston Area Council to purchase capital equipment. This agreement replaces the Kentucky State Price List for future purchases. Item seven twenty-six is personnel. We have the retirement of James McCarty, Jim McCarty, as co-director of the Park and Recreation Department, and authorized payment of all accrued leave effective one, one, fifteen. We have the resignation of Julson Pacheco, I T. Director, and authorized payment of all accrued leave effective twelve, twenty-nine, fourteen. We have the promotion of John Fields from patrol officer to sergeant effective one, one, fifteen, and the appointment of Kenneth Hogston as Deputy Director of Operations in our Sewer Department effective one, six, fifteen. That concludes the consent agenda.
All right. As our motion on the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
Move by Commissioner Roach.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Haynes. All those who signify their presence tonight will be considered to voted, affirmed to have been consent items seven one through seven twenty-six, with the exception of seven two, seven, and seven point twenty-three, unless you file vote modification forms with the city clerk. I don't believe there's any filed, so those items are approved. Next item, board appointments. These are reappointments from Human Rights Commission, reappointment of Singer P. Cannon Jr. to three-year term ending twelve, one, seventeen. He had a one-year term, I guess it was, from last year, so that's eight point one, and...
May we accept your nomination?
Move by Commissioner Bowles, second by Commissioner...
Second.
Haye, I mean, sorry, Haynes. I was looking at the...
I was waiting, I couldn't hear you.
It's hard, I don't know, I'm having trouble hearing you all tonight.
You must be getting old.
I was gonna say, either that or the, too much, I was listening with my headphones on, too, too much today. Second by Commissioner Haynes. Any discussion? Sinon, clerk, please call roll.
Mister Roach?
Yes.
Mister Haynes?
Yes.
Mister Bowles?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Under old business, Kathy. Kathy, I'd like to address you.
Okay, I'm sorry, sure. Eight point two is another reappointment. This is for reappointment of Christina Libby to a three-year term ending twelve, one, seventeen, to Human Rights Commission.
I make a motion to accept.
Move by Commissioner Haye.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bowles. Any discussion? Sinon, clerk, please call roll.
Mister Roach?
Yes.
Mister Hayes?
Yes.
Mister Bowles?
Yes.
Mister Haye?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, thank you, and we appreciate the service of Mister Japan and Miss Libby. It was a format under old business, we need to add R. H. R. Director, Miss Kathy Fields, to discuss some health insurance issues. So if there's no objection, nine point one will be old business with R. H. R. Director. Just making it formal, that's all.
I just recently was informed by Health Smart of two thousand and fifteen non-compliance with our medical plan one. It's information that really came to us at the eleventh hour, as we've already closed out our open enrollment. The non-compliance has to do with where embedded deductibles are set. The I R. S. can move that target year to year or keep it stable. The city's had their deductible at two thousand five hundred on health plan one for, ever since that plan has been launched, for like, three years. In two thousand and fifteen, the I R. S. has set the minimum at two thousand six hundred. So, shockingly, we just learned through Health Smart, neither Health Smart or U S. I. identified this earlier, so we just were told on Friday that if we keep our health plan one as it is, we won't be meeting an I R. S. standard in section two, twenty-three. So some of the options to remedy this would be, and I'm seeking commission direction on this, as we discussed benefit plans for two thousand and fifteen with the commission earlier. So one option, if we make no changes to the plan, as it's been rolled out to employees, our two thousand five hundred dollar embedded deductible would be considered invalid. That would mean that all of our employees who have selected that plan would actually be subject to a five thousand dollar deductible, which in my mind would be a completely unacceptable option, because it's such a radical change from what employees would expect. I guess I'll back up some to explain what an embedded deductible is. When employees are covering more than one family member, two thousand five hundred is a cap per person that's established not to exceed five thousand as a group. So if you're covering three people, one person could hit two thousand five hundred, another could hit two thousand five hundred, but the group will never exceed a total of five thousand. So that's an embedded deductible, when you have a lower cap within a larger cap. In two thousand and fifteen, the I R. S. says that cap can be no lower than two thousand six hundred. So a second option would be that we redefine our plan to set the cap at two thousand six hundred and still maintain an embedded deductible. That would keep employees having no more than two thousand six hundred exposure per individual not to exceed five thousand per group. A third option would be to split our medical plan two, medical plan one into two separate plans. One plan would be just a single coverage only, because we could have a two thousand five hundred dollar individual deductible for single only, that's not embedded, and then to have our employee spouse, employee child, and family coverage, another medical plan that would have the two thousand six hundred dollar embedded deductible. That would add four plans instead of three. Health Smart could do it, but it would be, there'd be some manual operation on their, on their part. Reasons I favor that option is that it would keep things the same for those employees that have selected medical plan one, it would keep the two thousand five hundred exactly as is. Some drawbacks would be, it adds another plan, and it could add some claims processing confusion and snafus potentially, because there would be some manual processing that would occur out of their normal routine processing.
So option two would just be to raise that straight across the board without creating a new plan to the twenty-sixth?
Yes.
So why is that problematic?
The problem then would be, with any of these options, communication needs to be delivered to employees, and I think time is of the essence, which is why I wanted to address the commission, because they've made their decisions, and we'll roll into January, and Health Smart does need to know how to process these claims as they hit, so Health Smart will be seeking direction from us as well. Option number two does mean one hundred dollars more of deductible exposure for employees per year if we want with that option. So option number two or option number three seem to be the preferable options in my mind. I'll, if you have questions, please let me know.
How many, how many are on the single plan? Is that two or three?
In plan one, we have a hundred and five employees total, thirty-four, help me with the math here, I think it's thirty-four are on single, and seventy-one are on the, the employee spouse, employee child, or family. So there'd be seventy-one that would really need to go to two thousand six hundred embedded deductible in order to meet that I R. S. standard for two thousand and fifteen. to meet that IRS standard for 2015.
Wouldn't the simple thing to do be to go with option two? I mean, it's like, we just learned of this, so we notify our employees tomorrow. It's going to be 100 over the course of 26 pay, or 24 pays, 24.
And only if you get there.
Yes, that's an excellent point. So not.
I agree with you.
Not all employees would be impacted because some employees wouldn't ever hit that anyway. So it won't change the premiums. No employee premiums would change, but deductible would increase by $100.
I think that's the easier. I'm with Commissioner Bowers.
Do we need to vote on this?
People get notified, and probably.
Oh, absolutely. I have to notify the employees.
I think we need to vote on it because.
I don't think. Rob said, the city attorney said.
I think she just needed direction.
As long as she has provided you notification of what she plans to do, and we did not note, we did not, or excuse me, the commission did not note on the earlier proposals. So as long as you agree with what she's doing, I don't think you necessarily need to take a vote.
Does anyone disagree?
Does everybody want number two? Number two.
We'll just let the record reflect that the commission was in agreement with staff recommendation. Was any other old business that members had?
Did you want three?
But that's all right, we're good, we're good.
We said we supported the staff decision, so whatever the staff decision was.
No, we chose two. She wanted three.
I'm sorry.
We're going with two. Maybe we do need to take a vote.
No, we're good, we're on two.
You know what you're doing, right? Going with two?
Eric, we're good. We're good.
I was trying to word that in a way that would give the flexibility, that's why I said staff recommendation, so.
You could say one of the staff recommendations.
Yes. All right, is there any other old business?
I told the mayor, my Christmas present tonight is I don't have any old business.
See, he saw our Christmas look, he saw that.
Merry Christmas.
We said we are open commission, we make sure everybody gets the time that they need. Any old business going once, going twice, move on to new business. One item on the new business is 10.1. This is up to.
Well, I did have a little piece of old business.
Okay, go ahead.
A question.
Go ahead.
Did we set up the contraption that measures speed up on Douglas yet? That's, I saw you talking back there, I thought I'd pick on you. You remember we talked about Douglas Avenue, they went their speed limit lowered, and I was just reading the minutes that we decided we were going to put the equipment up there that checks for speed and increase the patrol up there. Have we like done the equipment up there yet?
The equipment at the time when we spoke about that was being utilized in another area. I know that they have gotten the report down, but I would need to double check and see if they have actually gotten.
So we're going to be working on that really soon, right?
Yes, I know, the reason I say that, I know the place that it was designated as bleak, so I'll make sure that it's.
Okay, so let me ask you a question, like that place where it was is one of my recurring, like complaints, like I get from the citizens, I give it to you guys without saying the place. Can you just tell me like what the report says, like is it?
The report actually indicates a level of enforcement action that it recommends based on the data that it gathered.
Okay.
It recommended low enforcement.
Low enforcement?
With regards to.
So not to increase anything there?
That's, well, that's the, yes, the general, the device recommended that, but, you know, we think that was a great solution.
That's good to know. Thank you.
Okay. Now are we ready for any business? 10.1 is the authorization of a purchase order for the Salve Chemicals, provide parasitic acid, disinfection of a fluid at the wastewater treatment plant, and has something to do with our ozone. There you go. Let's make sure I'm saying this right, with our ozone treatment and the requirements of the state to reduce the parts per million of E Cola. Did I get it right? Okay. So that's what this is, the new amount is $60,000. This would come from account number 68.54335, which has 562,000. And then a cap. 319, which is uncovered. So there's money for $60,000 for this purchase. I feel like I'm really dragging it out here waiting on a. Do you want me to say something else?
Oh, I'm fine.
No, they're looking, they're like, and it's. It is 59 cents a pound. Good price.
I'm in agree with you that we do it, I just couldn't find my paperwork on it.
Oh, it's okay.
When I read it at home, it read like something we should be, we should do.
Typically, we don't use a lot, we don't use a lot of chemicals. This is a temporary thing, from what I understand, and the ozone is a much cleaner level.
Do you need a motion on this?
We just need a motion to accept.
I make a motion to accept.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Roche. Seconded by Commissioner Haynes. Any further discussion? CNN, please call roll.
Mr. Roche?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Hale?
Yes.
Mayor May.
Yes, I'm as approved. Thank you. I was going to have to get into the parts per million, everything for a second.
Parts per drain.
Any other new business?
Do you think we should all try to sing "We Wish You a Merry Christmas"?
Well, I was going to say, everybody was going to, I was going to give everybody a chance to leave before we did that, no. I was going to say some things about Commissioner Hale with her last meeting. But obviously, we'll let commissioners go first. Just go down the line. And just say anything, anything else you want to add?
Well, I don't have any other new business, so I'll just talk about Commissioner Hale. I've really enjoyed working with her. We have talked about a lot of different things, and I appreciate the fact that she is prepared. Even when she and I aren't on the same page, she's always prepared, she's diplomatic, she really has, I think, is trying to do the best that she can for the city. So I appreciate her and I appreciate working with her, and I look forward to doing things with her in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Haynes?
Well, you know, all hail to Hale.
No, I was going to say that.
Actually, she has been a joy, because the one thing I enjoy is, I'm glad that we're not all the same, because, you know, we have some very detailed people on the commission. I'm very general, the big picture, so when I get with them, you know, I'm looking for like a couple of lines, and these two are writing back emails that goes for pages. I don't even get a chance to get in, I say, you know, it's too much, I said, that has to be a face-to-face conversation, I can't get in that detailed, you know, email. But I have really enjoyed the effort that you put in. I mean, regardless of what it is, you were down to the detail, and, you know, like I said, we didn't have to agree on everything, but we respected each other's opinion, and we, you know, looked at each other's, how we came up with, whatever we came up with, and it is really been enjoying. I look forward to working with you in some capacity in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner Haynes, Commissioner Bowers.
I would just say ditto to everything that's already been said. I'm going to miss you, Commissioner Hale, sitting right there beside me. It's been really a pleasure to work with you, and it's, this is what, number five commissions on which I've served.
Show off.
I was trying to get the preposition in the right order. And it's just really interesting that when you put any five people together, you get a completely different flavor, and it's been a really, really good flavor since you've been here, and I'm going to miss you sitting there, and I'll be moving down to that chair next month, and I'll have to look at a blank wall, and that's going to make it more difficult. But she's been a real asset to this commission, and everything you've already heard about her is true, so I'm going to miss you, Commissioner Hale. I'll still see you all around, but I'll miss you right here. And we'll work with you because you'll be on, you'll be on some, is she going back to the commission? The other commission, Human Rights Commission?
No.
Well, you'll have to pick your name in for something, then we'll put you somewhere.
Go ahead, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you all, but, oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I wish Merry Christmas.
Commissioner Hale, I wanted to say something, since we're on communications from the commission, just to thank you for stepping up and all the hours you put in, and as we've all had on this commission, not all of us have been in agreement, but when we all disagree, we've all done that respectfully, and I would have to say that you really have done your homework on issues and brought up some challenging points on things, but I do appreciate your knowledge of government, your knowledge of the community, I think has very, been a very big asset to us, different perspective, excuse me, and I just appreciate your friendship over the years and the many sacrifices you've made to be on this board. The commissioners that have been here obviously know the amount of time it takes to be up here, and some folks in the community appreciate that, and we all do, we appreciate everything that you've done. We look forward to working, as the commission said, in another capacity somewhere if there's interest. Don't really know what that would be, but we do appreciate you. We wish, we wish you could stay with us because it's been a great four months, and wish you well in the future. Now, we'll turn that back to you.
Thank you all very much. I have a hard time talking without getting emotional, so I'm going to try really hard not to do that. I've already did that once in the work session, but it has been a pure joy to me to be here. I've enjoyed every minute of it. You all have been wonderful to work with, we have gotten along even when we've disagreed. And I think, I have a lot of friends that are not from Frankfurt, and always telling them what a wonderful place Frankfurt is to live, because Frankfurt truly has public officials, both elected and staff, that truly care about their community and are true public servants. And I think you all really show that, that all of the elected officials, the staff here at City Hall are true public servants, and I think not every community can say that. And so the citizens of Frankfurt are really lucky, and I've been really blessed by having the opportunity to sit in this chair and to have the experience of serving the citizens. I've been involved in the community for a long time. I used to say that some people golf, I attend meetings, and I enjoy it, it's what I do. And so you all haven't seen the last of me, I'm sure, because in one way or the other, I'll still be around until my daughter puts me in the home. And so I do want to continue to serve, and I want to thank the staff. You all have been wonderful, you've answered my questions when you probably really would have preferred to be able to go on with your work. And I got another tour of the sewer facility, which I appreciated. I was on the sewer board when, before it was abolished many years ago, and took the tour, and enjoyed seeing it again, because I think it's fascinating.
It's going to be a great weekend.
Well, it's all part of government, people, it's all part of government. But I have enjoyed it, and I do thank you, and I know that Commissioner Star will do a great job. He too has been involved for a long time, and so I stepped down knowing that a good person is taking the other chair here, and I just, I appreciate it. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Saying, when we adjourn, I would ask that the motion be made that we adjourn in honor and thankfulness to Dawn Hale for her service.
I move that we adjourn in the honor of Commissioner Hale.
My second.
Seconded by Commissioner Roche. Any discussions? CNN, please call roll.
Mr. Roche?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Hale?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, thank you. You're all right. Yes. Sorry.